Nominations under God, the visible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our first act of business today is Article One, to elect a moderator for a side over town meeting. Doug Fryman has been nominated. We have a second. All those in favor? It was George and Pete, Tom.
I could ask for other nominations.
Right.
Well, it's too late. You don't want to do it? I'm fine doing it. Thanks, Tom. Thanks very much. Welcome, everybody, to the Londonderry Town Meeting. It's always an exciting day for me. Unfortunately, we don't have the eighth graders or PBA students here today. I guess they're out skiing. So they're not with us. I'd like to, actually, right now, Chris Morrow has come to speak a little bit about what's going on at the state. He's our representative. And without objection, before we get going on Town Meeting, they will let him speak. He's got a bunch of things due today, so he's a busy man. Did I have an objection? No?
Good morning. For those of you that don't know me, I live over in Weston. I grew up in Manchester and lived in Weston since 2000. Raised a couple of daughters there. They went to Floodbrook and Burn Burton. And I was, most of my profession worked in the family business, which was the Northshire Bookstore down in Manchester. So right now, I've been up in Montpelier almost a couple of months now. It's quite a learning experience, a lot going on. If you want detailed information, committee by committee of what's been going on, there's a report on my website, Morrow, the number four, dp.com. You can delve into that. And if you want updates through the session, there's also an email sign up on that. And also, out front there, there's a QR code. And on my website, there's a link to a survey that the Speaker of the House just put out about education reform. Most of what's going on up there, at least most, what's taken up most of the air is education reform, which is driven by the property tax issue that you've all experienced over the last few years. And so this is really your last chance to weigh in. So if you have kids or grandkids or are interested in education in any way, please fill out that survey. It's not that long. It's like one page. To get input into what's going to happen over the coming weeks. It's all going to come together really quickly in the next few weeks, just because of the structure of what happens up there. And this is really our last chance to make our voices heard. There's a lot of issues still outstanding about school choice, about sending towns. Most people up in Montpelier don't understand the whole sending town thing that well because they haven't experienced it. So anyway, that's important if you want to weigh in on education. There's a lot going on. I just wanted to, I don't want to take up a lot of your time, so I just open it up to Q and A for a second. Is that okay? So if anyone has questions about what's going on up there, or anything else about Montpelier, be happy to answer them briefly. Please, yes, sir?
What's the relationship between the governor and the legislature right now?
Well, the governor did come out with a broad scope proposal for education reform, which is something he has typically not come to the legislature with any kind of initiative. It left it up to the initiative, the legislature, to come up with things. So that was welcome, that he came up with that. Unfortunately, most of the substance, the details were very slow to come. He just released the actual bill last week. And the way it works up there is the House does their thing, the Senate does their thing, and then in mid-March, they have what's called crossover, where the bills go to the other House to get voted on, take testimony and whatnot. So you think you have five months to do everything, but you really only have two months. And then you react to whatever the other House did. There's a fair amount of politics still going on. And it's about to get more political as these bills come to the House to get voted on. But the governor does meet weekly with the Speaker of the House and the President pro town of the Senate. And there's, I think, broad agreement on the basics of education reform. But there's, you know, there's still a political environment, for sure. That's, Jim?
I have a question for you. Last session, you had a super majority, and now there isn't. Do you have an idea what impact that might have on legislation?
Well, yeah, it's a big impact. And I think even the people, the Democrats who were in charge of the super majority, admit at this point that they kind of got a little overzealous. And so it was a good, this is my opinion now, a good kind of humbling of Democratic leadership. And I'm speaking as a Democrat, kind of independent Democrat. But, so, you know, the governor can veto anything he wants now. So that definitely shapes what's going to come out of both Houses. It's shaping the character of the committees. There's more Republican chairs. There's more Republicans on the various committees. And so it's changed the dynamic up there.
Can you also tell us what committees you're on?
I'm on, in the House, you're only on one committee. In the Senate, they're on two, because there's so much fewer of them. I'm on the Energy and Digital Infrastructure Committee. So we deal with energy issues and then oversight of the IT infrastructure of the state, which has been woefully un... Well, it's been neglected, and we've been spending hundreds of millions of dollars on it, and the legislature has not been keeping an eye on it. It's really kind of disappointing, actually. Although, six years ago, the governor created this thing called the Agency of Digital Services, which is, and their whole job is to kind of rationalize IT across state government. And so you don't have different agencies doing their own thing, and having systems that don't talk to each other. And the woman that's in charge of that now is quite sharp. And so I have some more confidence that that, over the next few years, that is going to get a lot better. And my committee is directly charged with oversight of that. So we're going to be on top of it a lot more than we used to be.
Last year, did you ask about housing? Last year, the federal money for housing disappeared, went away. What are we doing to provide housing? You know, there was temporary shelters. Where does that come from?
Still, the question was about housing, what we're going to be doing. There are a few bills right now pending. There's one dealing directly with the homeless population. And then there's more about affordable housing and kind of middle income housing. It's all about reducing the burdens to zoning and building on what we did last year, which was the Act 250 reform, to make it easier to build housing. And giving money to the housing agencies who are good at building affordable housing. So there's, you know, there's attention there, and there's money there, but it's not nearly the amount of money that was there during the COVID money days. That's the other thing that's happening up over in Montpelier, is that I wasn't there for it, but there was a lot of money coming into the state during COVID, the ARPA money. And so they got used to throwing a lot of money out there. Now, it's, the budget is a lot lower. Yes, sir?
I noticed there's a rep upstate who's introducing some kind of building to reduce or eliminate salt use on the roads. And I'm wondering if there's much taste for that? How can we support that as our cars are all rotting out? I mean, you can't even see our cars with all the crap that blows up in the road. It's brutal. It's horrible for the apartment.
Yeah. If you have an opinion about that, that's coming out of the Environment Committee. So you can...
How do we support that?
Just email the committee. You can go, the Vermont General Assembly has a really good website, actually. And this is one of the good things that came out of COVID, is every single committee meeting and every single House meeting is streamed on YouTube and recorded, so you can go back and look at anything. The agendas for each committee are on the pages. And who's on that committee with a link to their email and everything. So if you want to weigh in on any particular issue, you can just pull up the emails of that committee and email them directly and tell them what you're thinking. Vtrans is exempt from that bill, as I understand it. So you might... Well, yeah, it's not quite as robust as I think. But please do weigh in. That's one of the things I'm trying to encourage folks, is to, you know, Vermont is still small enough, so your voice can be heard. So please lean in and email folks. And let me know if I can help with anything. Get my email. Yes, ma'am?
After what you just said, I just want to circle back to the form that you mentioned. Is it accessible on your website, too? For public schools, like the reform. I heard you say this is the last chance.
Oh, I was referring to this survey that the Speaker of the House put out. So that's just a written survey. But if you, the Education, the committee, Education Committee, in both the House and Senate, you can watch those, go to their website and look at the committee page and look at the agenda and pick some out. Over the coming weeks, there's going to be a lot of testimony coming out on education reform. Or if you have your opinions already, please email the committee or the Speaker of the House. Yes?
I've taken a look at that survey. It's really great. Right, it's short, the questions are very thought provoking, and you have to have your thoughts together to answer them. And I wonder, in a community like ours that relies upon sending and school choice, if you have any recommendations for language that we could use, or if you could provide any, to help us preserve those tenants in those communities?
Yeah, good question. Just reiterate how well school choice has worked for us and our kids. As I say, most people up there don't understand it. They haven't experienced the seamless transition from like a Floodbrook to a Burn Burton. There's a lot of emotionality around this, even though it's a very small percentage of kids statewide. And in terms of the budget, it's not a lot of money, but it's a very emotional fraught issue up there. So please, if you feel strongly about that, mention the value of having school choice. Yeah? Bob?
What's your feeling on the attempt by our governor to take control of education and take it basically into his purview?
Yeah, well, I think what you're referring to is, there's a statewide Board of Education typically have a fair amount of power, mostly around rulemaking and other things. And the governor is trying to take away that power and put it into the Agency of Education, which has been underfunded for years now. And doesn't have the capacity to do what they need to be doing now, let alone if we do statewide, part of the initiative is having statewide standards and statewide everything, some of which needs to happen. But then, in order for that to be successful, we need a very strong Agency of Education. And we need a strong education board, I think. And that's a nonpartisan, non-elected board, so they can make decisions that the Agency of Education wouldn't be making. So I'm in, personally, I'm in favor of leaving the board's powers the way they are. But that's a big topic of conversation up there. Yes, sir?
Steve Witchell. A few years ago, our legislature passed a law that created mandates on greenhouse gases. If those mandates were met, it would probably reward the green energy businesses in this state with lots of work. And if they weren't met, the state would be sued. And the likely result of monies being paid to environmental groups not within the state, literally anywhere in the world. The governor's tried to veto it, it got overturned. Many people have regretted voting for that now. It's not a good law. You, being on the Energy Committee, would you be willing to start some action to change that law, or just get rid of it?
Well, there are some bills to do that. Just a clarification, and you're talking about the Global Warming Solutions Act, there's a number of controversial environmental bills. And this has gotten a lot of press because of this thing called the private right of action, which means built into the bill is a stipulation that any citizen or organization can sue the government to, if they're not meeting their greenhouse gas emissions requirements, reduction requirements. But they don't, there's no monetary damages. If you, if, right now, the Conservation Law Foundation is suing the state of Vermont. If they win, the only remedy is to force the Agency of Natural Resources to create rules around greenhouse gas reductions. There's no monetary payout. There's no, they can't stipulate what the rules would be, how quickly they would happen. The only thing that will happen was they'll, it'll send it back to the Agency of Natural Resources, and they say that you need to take action on this. So this is one of those bills where there's a lot of misinformation about there, out there. The other one is the big clean heat standard, which was a big one during the election. People very concerned about their heating fuel prices going up. That is effectively dead. So we don't need to worry about that anymore. It's more complicated than that, but effectively, it's dead because of the way it was written. I don't want to take up too much time. You can cut me off whenever, but if people have...
Anybody a couple more questions, and then we'll get going?
I think we're good. Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'll be at the Grill on Thursday at 5:00, if you have, you know, just for a small group discussion, if you have questions or want to have a conversation about any of these issues. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for coming. All right. First, before we get going, we'll go over some rules. Let me find my paper here. So this meeting operates under Roberts Rules and Vermont State Law. Sometimes Vermont State Law trumps Roberts Rules. If you have questions, you can certainly, at any point, hold up your hand and say, I have a question, or a point of order, if you think something's not going correctly. You're absolutely welcome to do that. Do we have any new residents to Londonderry here today? Welcome. Do we have any people who are not residents of Londonderry here today? Welcome to you guys, too. Without objection, if you guys want to speak, you can. Just see me first, so we can set that up. Otherwise, we ask you not to speak, and obviously, you can't vote. Regarding voting, we have these neat little wristbands now. If you want to vote, you need, and you're a registered voter in the town of Londonderry, you need to have a wristband on. So, and if you're, if we're doing a vote from the floor and you're not a resident, please don't vote. Only voters speak. We talked about that a little bit. All questions are directed to the moderator. That's me. So if you have a question for somebody, ask me, and I'll try to find an answer for you. What we don't want to do is get into back and forth. We don't want a back and forth between people on the floor and the Select Board, or, you know, people from the town office, or something like that. So if you have a question, ask me, and I will try to find an answer for you. Everybody has an opportunity to speak once on any given question. And once everyone has had a chance to voice their point of view, you can speak a second time. And we ask, we've never had to limit time for people to speak, but people have been generally pretty good. So keep your comments concise. Think about what you're going to say before you say them, and that'll make the whole meeting go quicker. So if you want to stand up and move, or second an article, or even speak, please state your name. I am terrible with names. I have like blank spots in my brain over names. And that way, the secretary will have an opportunity to record people's names. So if you're going to speak, if you want to make a motion, or if you want to second a motion, please state your name. We can have amendments to any motion that's given. So if we read an article and you think, well, you know what, they need an extra 500 bucks, you can amend the article to say, I move that we increase the amount by $500. That requires a second, and then that amendment is put on the floor for debate. The amendment can be amended again, so we can have a second amendment. Let's say we're increasing it by $500, but that $500 is going to go to purchasing, I don't know, new plow or something. So that can be an amendment to amendment. We debate that next. We dispose of the amendment to the amendment. We dispose of the amendment, and then we go back to the main article if it's been changed. We dispose of that.
go back to the main article if it's been changed, we dispose of that. So that kind of is how it works. And that's as far as it goes. Germain-ness, if we're, the classic example is if we're talking about buying a new grater, we're only going to talk about that grater. The article has to be germane, or the comments have to be germane to the article. So somebody can't come up and say, nah, the grater's fine, but what we really need is a loader. The loader's not on the agenda, so we're not going to talk about it, we're going to talk about a grater. So all of your comments need to be germane. We don't read from paper, so we don't, somebody can't stand up and give a speech, this is an informal event. I mean, I don't know if it's informal, it's kind of formal, but we try to keep it sort of light, and we don't read from paper. Occasionally, without objection, if somebody has something prepared and they're nervous or they're not comfortable speaking in public or something like that, we will allow people to read from paper. We don't give speeches, nothing here is political, that's not what we're about. Division, if we vote on an article and the vote is close, I'll sort of make a ruling. I'll say the ayes have it, the nays have it, and we'll make a ruling from there. Somebody's not happy with that, they can ask for a division of the House. What that is, all the ayes stand up, we count those people, all the nays stand up, we count those people, and then we have a result of the vote. If people are not comfortable with that and they want a written ballot, we can do that also. You need to say, I move for a written ballot, and you need to have seven other people also ask for, or seven people total ask for a written ballot. That's Vermont State law, and then we'll go to a, to a paper ballot, which is a scrap of paper, hopefully we have some scraps of paper around and you can write your answer. We do, okay, great. So on that, and then we'll put it in the ballot box and people, people can come up in line and place their ballots, show their wristbands. So for election of officers, officers need a nomination, somebody needs to nominate an officer from the floor. We don't need a second, people like to second, that's fine, if you want a second, you can do that. And all of election of officers is by written ballot if there's, if there's two or more candidates. If there's only one candidate, somebody can move for the clerk to cast one vote for that person, for nominations to be closed and the clerk to cast one ballot for that person. And everybody will vote on that, we have to have a vote just to make it legal. Calling the question, every so often, people like to call the question. I call the question, that's fine, sometimes debate goes on for a long time and we want to stop it. It's not a privileged motion, though, so you have to wait your turn. So if there's three people in front of you that want to speak, they get to speak. And if you want to hold up your hand and call the question, then you can call the question. If you happen to be the next person to speak, you can call the question. Point of order, if anybody has a question about how the rules work, by all means, that is, that is privilege, you can call up your, hold up your hand and say, point of order, and ask your question. And if you don't like a ruling that I might make, you can overrule me. And there's a whole process to do that, which I'll explain if that, if that happens. And actually, I don't, it doesn't bother me a bit to be overruled, I kind of have fun, The last thing, oh, we're all neighbors, we come here as neighbors, we go home as neighbors, the issues are about, or the discussion needs to be based on the issues, not on personalities. So we don't want to hear things like, well, Mr. Smith, I think your idea is blah, 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 blah. When you stand up and speak, just say, I think the idea regarding this is incorrect and I believe it should be that. We want to keep away from personalities. And the last thing is, I have no opinion today by Vermont State law, I can't take a position one way or the other on anything, I have to remain neutral. Sometimes I slip up, but I try to catch myself. So, and that's, that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions before we get going? No? Okay, good. All right. So Article 2, to act on the report of the town officers, will somebody please move Article 2?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Bob Fish and George. So this is your opportunity to ask the Select Board any questions that you might have on their reports in this book. Does anybody have any questions for the Select Board? Hearing no discussion, we'll vote on Article 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. To elect, so Article 3, to elect all town officials as required by law, the town officials can be found on page 2 of your booklet. Select Board member for a term of two years. James Amadon is the incumbent, it's my understanding that he prefers not to run for this particular seat. However, it's a possibility that Taylor Proudy may want to run for this seat. Do I hear any nominations for Select Board member for the term of two years?
I'm going to need Taylor Proudy.
Taylor Proudy's, name's been placed in nomination, are there any other nominations?
Move nominations be closed if the clerk casts one ballot for Taylor Proudy.
It's been moved that the nominations be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for Taylor Proudy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Taylor. Thank you very much. Select Board member for a term of three years, Taylor Proudy is the incumbent, he's just been elected to the term of two years. It's my understanding that James Amadon may want to run for this position. Do I hear any nominations? James Amadon's name's been placed in nominations, any other nominations? Hearing no nominations.
Nomination, move nominations be closed, clerk cast one ballot for James Amadon Jr.
It's been moved that the nominations be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for James Amadon Jr. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, congratulations, Jim. Thanks very much. Town clerk for a term of one year, Allison Marino has, is in the position right now, she's been appointed to that position, and do we hear any nominations for town clerk?
I nominate Allison Marino.
Allison's been nominated for town clerk, are there any other nominations? Do we, oh. Hearing no other nominations.
Move nominations be closed, clerk cast one ballot for Allison Marino.
Nomination, it's been moved that the nominations be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for Allison Marino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Allison. And thank you for doing the position. Lister for a term of three years, Sandra Clark is the incumbent. Do I hear nominations for Lister?
I nominate Sandra Clark.
Sandra Clark's name's been placed in nomination, any other nominations for Lister for a term of three years?
Move nominations be closed and clerk cast one ballot.
It's been moved that the nominations be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for Sandra Clark. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Congratulations, Sandra, and thank you very much again for your service. Lister for the term of one year, this position is currently vacant. Pat Delgiorno was the incumbent and she's left, she's no longer there. This position is for a one-year term to fill out a three-year term. Do we hear any nominations for Lister? Anyone want to be a Lister? It's a great job, all kinds of benefits. Sandra can tell you about them.
Oh, yeah. He gave those.
Any nominations for Lister? Hearing no nominations, I guess we'll leave the position open. It really is an important job, so if somebody wants to step up and serve town government, it would be terrific. No? No nominations for Lister, so that position will still remain vacant. Cemetery Commissioner for a term of five years, Gary Barton is the incumbent, do we hear nominations for Cemetery Commissioner?
I'd like to nominate Gary Barton.
Gary Barton's name's been placed in nomination. Do we hear any other nominations?
Move nominations be closed and clerk cast one ballot.
It's been moved that the nominations be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for Gary Barton. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Gary. Trustee of Public Funds for a term of three years, Michael Goodbody is the incumbent, do we hear a nomination for trustee of public funds for a term of three years?
I nominate Michael Goodbody.
Michael Goodbody's name's been placed in nomination, do we hear any other nominations?
Move nominations be closed and clerk cast one ballot.
It's been moved that the nominations be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for Michael Goodbody for the position of trustee of public funds for a term of three years. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Congratulations, Michael. Thanks again. South Londonderry Library trustee for a term of three years, Margot Wright is the incumbent, but she's indicated that she does not wish to do it anymore. Do I hear nominations for South Londonderry trustee for a term of three years?
I nominate Diana Pagnucco.
Diana Pagnucco's name's been placed in nominations and it's been seconded. Do we hear any other nominations for South Londonderry Library trustee for a term of three years?
Move nominations be closed and clerk cast one ballot.
It's been moved that the nominations be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for Diane Pagnucco for South Londonderry Library trustee for a term of three years. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposed, the ayes have it, and Diane Pagnucco is the new trustee for the South Londonderry Library. Congratulations, Diane, thank you very much. All right, I need a sip of...
Yeah. I'm doing a lot of yours.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mimi, for all your service. All right, now we get to the nuts and bolts. Article 4, to see how much the town will vote for a general fund. That number can be found on page 4 and page 12 of your town report. And I would entertain a motion to put on the table $3,150,324 to see how much the town will vote for a general fund. Will somebody please move Article 4?
No.
Article 4 has, Bob Fish, and we need a second?
I'll second it. Second. Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Article 4, to see how much the town will vote for a general fund of $3,150,324. Do we hear any discussion on the budget? Hearing no discussion on the budget, we'll close discussion and vote on Article 4. To see how much the town will vote for a general fund, $3,150,324. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article 5, shall the town vote for its taxes to be paid to the town treasurer as provided by law, due date to be on or before October 1st, 2025? Will somebody please move Article 5? Article 5 has been moved, shall the town vote for its taxes to be paid to the town treasurer as provided by law, due date to be on or before October 1st, 2025? Any discussion on Article 5? Hearing no discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor of Article 5, shall the town vote for its taxes to be paid to the town treasurer as provided by law, due date to be on or before October 1st, 2025? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Article 5 passes. Article 6, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $91,000? Actually, before we do Article 6, without objection, I believe Jeff Duda might want to speak to this. Is that true or not true?
Well, now that you brought it up. Sure.
Okay, do you want to come up here and talk?
I'll come up there.
Without objection, Jeff has something he'd like to read.
Good morning. You'll notice in your report that the Champion Fire Company is asking for an increase this year, which is something that we did put down in last year's town literature that we would be asking this year. I can sum this up in one word, inflation. From 1953 till 2002, the town of Londonderry, on average, increased its allocation to the fire service every four to five years. Since 2002, we have not had any sort of increase. We've remained level at $20,000. So assuming that you do the Google search and it comes up with the cumulative inflation, that's about 75% over the last 23 years. So current funding would put us in the $35,000 range. Expenses for the fire service have gone considerably higher than inflation cost. Right now, it costs us about $4,500 to outfit a person when they come on the department for any of our frontline personnel. That includes helmet, turnout gear, coats, pants, and boots to meet all the requirements. That's about where we are at. In July of 2023, the flood that hit our town damaged the station, damaged the back wall of the station, and unfortunately FEMA was of no use to us because we are a private 501(c)(3) non-municipal entity. Insurance did cover part of the damages, but the overall improvements that we decided to make to help make us a little more resilient to the next flood, we hope, drove up the cost of doing business for us as well. Last year, our 1995 fire engine, which was, which is now 30 years old, cost us almost $20,000 worth of repairs. Our hope is that this truck will make it another 10 years, but I can't guarantee that, as with anything. Our 1976 truck lasted us until 2008, and then the department bought a used truck to supplement until 2016, when we received a new one. Also coming up on the horizon is OSHA. OSHA is going to be coming into the fire service a little more difficult, a little more harder than they have. They're in the process of a rewrite. It's going to affect us by testing and making certain things mandatory to be done on an annual basis. Grant funding is drying up. We have applied for granting in the past, our last one was in 2017. As everybody knows, right now, the political structure in Washington is, who knows what's going to happen next? And to be totally honest, I don't know where we're going to be on applying for any grants when we have certain needs. Obviously, our next truck will be coming, we hope, within 10 years. Our AirePACs will be about 14 years on top of that, and those are some of our bigger expenses. And we currently have a roster of 18, excuse me, 17 volunteers supplemented by three juniors, and these members respond whenever asked. So as chief, I'm asking you to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you and all our firefighters for their service. Very much appreciated. All right, so Article 6, so the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $91,250 for the following organizations. Londonderry Conservation Fund, their report can be found on page 32, for $500. Champion Fire Company, number 5, their report's on page 36, $40,000. Phoenix Fire Company, number 6, page 37, $20,000. Londonderry Volunteer Rescue Squad, their report's on page 38, $15,750. South Londonderry Library Association, their report's on page 40. And they also have a poster in the back of the room with a survey that they would really appreciate to be filled out. It's got a little QR code on it. It's got a little QR code on it. You can take a picture with your phone, and they're asking for $15,000. Will somebody please move Article six? Rich Phelan's moved it. Do we hear? And we have a second? For Article six, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $91,250 for the Londonderry Conservation Fund, Champion Fire Company, Phoenix Fire Company, Londonderry Volunteer Rescue Squad, and Londonderry Library Association? Without objection, I'm not going to read all the dollar amounts. Discussion. Any discussion on Article six? Hearing no discussion, we will vote. Article six, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $91,250 for the following organizations? The Londonderry Conservation Fund, without objection, I'm not going to read all the dollar amounts. The Champion Fire Company number five, Phoenix Fire Company number six, Londonderry Volunteer Rescue Squad, and South Londonderry Library Association. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Article six passes. Before we get to Article seven, I believe Jim Weber is here and would like to speak for my community nurse program, which is run wonderfully by Regina Downer. Jim, do you have a few words that you'd like to say?
Well, I guess you've figured out who I am by now, so I don't have to introduce myself. I am on the board, however, of North Star Health, which you may know operates the clinic here in town, but I'm really here to help support Regina Downer and her group. We're asking you today to commit to $3,500 to her group. As you may know, they have about 17 volunteers. Regina and one other person really run this, and they provide a lot of support to the community. I want to give you just a few numbers to indicate the support. First of all, they had home visits last year of over 1,000. They had 10 calls to the rescue squad, so when they came to somebody's house to check things out that was necessary. They had 64 transports to medical appointments. They also delivered 336 meals, and so that gives you an idea of what it's all about. My feeling is that with the uncertainty that we have in Washington, as we heard Jeff say as well, I think it's important to know that we can control our local access to health, and that's why I think it's important to do this. You can hear more or read more about this on page 49. And finally, Regina wants to thank you all for the support you've historically given. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Article seven, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,222 for the following organizations? Friends of the West River Trail, their report is on page 57, $1,000. Grace Cottage Foundation, their report is on page 44, $1,000. Greater North Shore Access TV, their report is on page 43, $2,000. Green Mountain RSVP, their report is on page 45, $415. Green Up Vermont, their report is on page 58, $100. Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services, their report is on page 46, $1,513. Londonderry Fourth of July, their report's on page 41, $1,500. Londonderry Transport Services, the Mountain Town Connector, their report is on page 65, My Community Nurse Program, their report's on page 49, $3,500. Neighborhood Connections, their report is on page 51, $6,000. Senior Solutions, page 47, $970. SEVIDS, page 56, $5,307. SEVCA, page 48, $1,700. The Collaborative, page 54, $1,000. Valley Cares, which I think now says Valley Village, page... Yeah, so their, so their name's a little different now, Valley Village. Page 50, $2,742. Vermont Rural Fire Protection, page 42, $200. West River Montessori School, page 55, $3,000. Wyndham County Humane Society, page 59, $500. Wyndham County Youth Services, page 53, and now they're called Interaction, $315. And the Women's Freedom Center, page 52, for $800. Will somebody please move Article seven? It's been moved. Somebody second Article seven? Got a second? Article seven's been moved and seconded. Without objection, I'm not going to read all the names again. Somebody can object if they want. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,222 for the following organizations? Discussion. Yes, ma'am? Hang on, Chris has the microphone for you.
Yeah, it's the S-B-E-D-S. I was just curious what that is.
Somebody want to speak to what SEVIDS is? Oh, excellent. That's okay. Without objection, we'll hear your comments.
Thanks for having me. My name's Alex Beck from the Brown Road Development Corporation. You can read more about our organization, SEVIDS, or the Regional Economic Development Organization for the county. And so, I think this is my fourth or fifth year here with the folks. And we provide economic development services for businesses, municipalities. We do workforce development for the region and a number of other programs. And so, SEVIDS asks for $3 from every town in Wyndham County and the Wyndham region, including Weston and a few other communities, to support these efforts. And so, some projects include wastewater, the wastewater projects here in town. We provide technical support for municipalities to manage both those projects and the grants associated with them. We run high school career programs, and so that students know there are jobs here in our community, and we help those students find a job early. We're happy to answer any other questions about what we do where we are.
Further discussion on Article seven? I'm sorry, I didn't see it, but yes, sir.
I just wanted to, I've been on the board of Neighborhood Connections for about a few years. I just wanted to use this opportunity to fill people in on a couple of new things from Neighborhood Connections. We have a new executive director named Tom Simmons, who's been on board for less than a year. Our transportation initiative, you might have seen our van running around, and what we're doing is taking people up to medical apartments and getting to, you know, medicine facilities. Our usage doubled in 2024 from 2023. 59% of the usage comes from Londonderry. We take responsibility for Meals on Wheels over here, the Gomdiner down in Townsend. And so, we're, we're the ones that are operating that whole activity for nine towns in Vermont. We've had to upgrade our kitchen to make it commercial grade, but that's ongoing. That's something new. Big challenges for us, just like Jim Weber mentioned, including the nurse service, is fallout from federal and state budgets, particularly for our transportation and for Wheels on Wheels activities. We've got a bigger problem. Also, the impact of Medicaid in this area might be a difficult situation for our community as well as that of our faves. Our main purpose simply is to provide services and basically hope for the most vulnerable people in our community. That's all we're all about. And to be very quick, we thank you all, not only for the town support, but all of the individuals who helped us move ahead and do what we do. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bob. Any other discussion on Article seven? Hearing no more discussion on Article seven, we shall vote. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,222 for the following organizations, which I've previously read? Friends of, well, I'll read them real quick. Friends of the West River Trail, Grace Cottage Foundation, Greater North Shore Access TV, Green Mountain RSVP, Green Up Vermont, Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services, Fourth of July, Londonderry Transportation Services, the Mountain Town Connector, My Community Nurse Program, Neighborhood Connections, Senior Solutions, SEVIDS, SEVCA, The Collaborative, Valley Cares, Vermont Rural Fire Protection, West River Montessori School, Wyndham County Humane Society, Wyndham County Youth Services, and the Wyndham's Freedom Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article seven passes. Article eight, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be deposited into the Emerald Ash Borer Infestation Reserve Fund? Will somebody please move Article eight? Article eight's been moved. Can we have a second? And seconded? Shall, Article eight, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be deposited into the Emerald Ash Borer Infestation Reserve Fund? Discussion. Yes, ma'am? The question is, how much is in the fund now?
At the end of the last fiscal year, there was $12,000. We also voted $3,000 last year, so it's... Have you used any of that for fighting the ash borer?
The question is, have we used any of that for fighting the ash borer? We have not at this point.
I would just add that it's, the money is actually being reserved for when the health of the trees decline to a degree where we need to start removal of the trees. It's not a fund to fight the ash borer itself. That would be a different, beyond the town where there were any solutions.
So, to take out trees that are...
Or to take down... Yeah. Which our tree warden has estimated that within...
Can anybody here, Taylor, just grab the microphone?
Our town tree warden has estimated, within the mileage of our roads, that there's, I mean, probably, I can't remember, but it's like 1,200 or more.
Can people hear now?
Yeah.
Oh, you can, okay, good, good.
So, it's a large number of trees, and I think just to compare to removing trees, we've, we've had some projects each year where maybe four or five trees were involved, and it's about $2,500 a day for a tree service to do a minimal amount of tree removal and work, and that equates to just a couple of trees. So, this number could be very large. I have heard recently that there's a possibility for some state funding to actually help towns remove trees damaged by the Emerald Ash Borer. So, this fund, along with maybe some other grants or funding that may become available, I don't know a lot about that yet. There, there might be a solution, multifaceted solution, when it becomes a real problem. The estimation is that the infestation of the ash borer will probably start to show itself after about a 10-year cycle that began a couple of years ago now in Vermont. So, it's, we're kind of on a ticking timeline that we're not seeing a lot yet, but once we do, it's going to be significant.
Further discussion on Article eight? Yes, ma'am?
So, the tree warden isn't in charge of that? Does that have to hire a crew, outside crew? We're not looking at the town guys trying to clear up some trees. Who, who decides when we hit that point?
I think it will be an effort that involves the tree warden and the town crew and, you know, the board for decision-making. It's definitely work beyond what our road crew will accomplish. There have been some instances where we've had trees that need to be taken down that are, they just happen to be ash crews where this fund could be used by our town road crew. But as an overall approach to manage this problem, it's going to go beyond our road crew and our resources. So, it would likely be a subcontractive service to the town, so...
Further discussion on Article eight? Hearing no further discussion, we'll vote. Article eight, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be deposited into the Emerald Ash Borer Infestation Reserve Fund? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article eight passes. Article nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited into the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund? Will somebody please move and second Article nine? It's been moved. Do we have a second? Bruce or Pamela? Article nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited into the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund? Discussion. Discussion on Article nine. Hearing no discussion, we'll vote. Article nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited into the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Article nine passes. The ayes have it. Article 10, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited into the Town Buildings Reserve Fund? Somebody please move and second Article 10? It's been moved, Article 10 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited into the Town Buildings Reserve Fund? Discussion. Article 10. Yes?
So, is that quite a bit of money in that reserve fund now? Is that money going to be used to pay for the work that's being done on the Twitchell Building?
The question was, we have quite a bit of money in the reserve fund right now. Is that money going to be used to pay for the work on the Twitchell Building? Yes.
Yes, we're using some of it because the bond isn't as much as the construction cost were, and we also have been using it on this building as well.
You want to mention the MURF grant?
Yeah, and we actually got a grant, it's called a MURF grant, it's for energy efficiency. $350,000 towards the town on this project.
Further discussion on Article 10? Any further discussion on Article 10? Hearing none, we'll vote. Article 10, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited into the Town Buildings Reserve Fund? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 10 passes. Article 11, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $340,000 Article 11, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $340,000 to be deposited into the Highway Improvement Reserve Fund? Somebody please move or move and second Article 11.
Shall move.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $340,000 to be deposited into the Highway Improvement Reserve Fund? Article 11 is now on the floor for discussion. Yes, ma'am?
So is this the fund that helps with culverts and bridges and roads that are impacted by flooding?
So the question is, is this the fund that helps with roads and bridges and culverts that are impacted by flooding?
I think the answer would be that it's primarily paving is our largest expense.
Microphone?
Sorry. I think the quick answer is that this would primarily be used for paving. In the recent past, I guess it's been a few years now, we had an engineer take a look at our roads and help us define a schedule for repaving and getting things caught up and on a schedule to be repaved. And it was determined that we were underfunded in order to accomplish those goals. So this number, 340,000, is intended, or is supposed to be increased $40,000 a year over-- it was originally intended period, but we're into that period a few years now. So at the end of all these increases, we're closer to $800,000 or $900,000 a year to be in a position to do the work that needs to be done on a regular schedule. So this, the increase from 300 to 340 is on a schedule to be able to accomplish the paving needs for the mileage of roads that we have.
Yes, sir.
How much is in the reserve fund now?
We spent-- at the end of June of last year, we had 280, a little over 284,000, but we did spend it on paving, so this is all towards paving for this amount.
If I could, we also have a $200,000 grant that we could use this year for class two paving.
Okay, I think we had-- do you have a follow-up question?
So does this get used every year? I mean, a reserve means like it's above and beyond. So is this?
It is used every year. We used to budget it, but sometimes we don't get the paving in, in the fiscal year. If it's in the budget, if we don't spend it, we lose it. This way, it's available when the paving can be done.
We benefit this particular last year with some flooding projects and FEMA money, and we have-- some of our paving projects were put on hold because of emergency work being done. So by having it in the reserve fund, we actually were able to retain some of those funds for the following year, which was a boost because of that that we were already underfunded.
Yes?
Who decides what roads is being paved, and do we need to request it?
The question is, who decides what roads need to be paved, and do we need to request it?
Typically, it's a discussion. The road foreman and myself, the road commissioner, and the select board, with the guidance of a plan that we had developed by an engineer, which gives us a timeline and a condition report for the roads in most in need, which is a longer list at this point. So there's a guided decision-making process that goes through the board essentially.
So we need to request it to the select board? Or how does it-- like if we see that our road is--
The question is, do they need to request it to the select board if they think their road needs attention?
We're always open to input, for sure.
Yes?
So if we were talking paving, are we talking replacing baldy culverts at the same time which you definitely need doing? Or is that separate?
It's not necessarily separate. It's kind of a case-by-case basis. I mean, typically, we would try to replace culverts that need replacement prior to paving a road. There's been instances where that doesn't happen based on the cost of the culvert replacement. Windy Rise Lane was an example of that, Windy Rise West, where the road got paved, but there's a very expensive culvert project that needed to be done and was unable to be done prior to paving. So typically, culverts will be replaced in advance of that, of the paving. Most often, our road crew tries to accomplish a certain amount of them each year. It's another thing that got behind schedule. It was actually a little bit of a boost for our crew to have so many replaced due to flooding, but there's still, you know, a lot of culverts each year to be replaced. What we've done in a couple of different instances, if there's a significant amount of culverts that need to be replaced prior to paving, Windholt Station Road is an example, will include the culvert replacement in the RFP4 paving so that it gets done in a timely manner if it's unable to be done by our road crew. So it's kind of a case-by-case situation, but the goal is to replace paving culverts prior to paving.
Yes?
Green Mountain Power is in the process of putting power lines underneath the roads in some places. Would that be a significant extra cost for this town, or are they responsible for doing it?
The question is, Green Mountain Power is in the process of putting underground lines in certain areas. Is that going to be a significant cost to the town, or is that their expense?
So the only project that I know of right now is specifically under the length of Undermountain Road that has been being talked about. I was approached by Green Mountain Power and their right-of-way agents that we've actually worked on our road access permit process because of the involvement with underground utilities and crossing our road or potentially being buried in the middle of the road. I don't know the full scope of that project, but one thing that I do know is it would be fully funded by Green Mountain Power if there were to be any requests to have utilities buried in our road.
So the repaving would be fully funded, too?
This is a dirt road that we're talking about.
Oh, a dirt road, okay.
If it were, if they had a road crossing that were on a paved road, typically, there would be something written into the agreement that they would repair the pavement, and they would kind of own it for a period of time, say a year or something like that, if it failed or something in that regard. The one particular large project of Underground Power is a dirt road, so a little bit different answer to the question, but it would be no extra cost to the town. It would require power. That's about it. No money of Google.
Yes, sir.
Being one of the people on Undermountain Road, we were approached by an easement agent for--
Maybe Chris can give you the microphone.
I'm a resident of Undermountain Road. We were approached by an easement agent for GMP. They were looking for incremental easements on our property, including underground that would require a box, as well as underground that would presumably cross our driveway. So we may need to talk to the town a little bit about how we should deal with that easement request, because it could have implications for our property.
Thank you.
Why would we put this underground? What's the danger to that?
I think we have a question over. Do you want to pass the microphone over?
I just gave you why they want to put it underground.
Oh, yeah. So we're kind of skipping. We kind of were germane for a second there when we're talking about pavement on top of roads that were being dug up for underground power. Now we're slipping into the realm of non-germane-ness if we're just talking about underground power, so.
There's a simple answer to that, though.
Okay.
Which is that you number the power out of--
Oh, hang on one second.
Yeah.
The number of power outages that they've had on Undermountain Road, I think they're running a line. It's intended to, I guess.
Okay, we're-- we've kind of slipped. We've slipped down the slippery slope. So that's a discussion. If somebody wants to bring it up under other business, by all means, we can talk about it then. Further discussion on Article 11? Hearing no further discussion on Article 11, we'll vote. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $340,000 to be deposited into the Highway Improvement Reserve Fund? All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing no nays, the ayes have it. Article 11 passes. Article 12, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be deposited into the Pingree Park Reserve Fund? Somebody please move and second Article 12.
Shall move.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Article 12, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be deposited into the Pingree Park Reserve Fund? Yes?
Is there a reserve fund for the other parks in town?
Question is, is there a reserve fund for the other parks in town? Let's answer, get that one answered, and then we'll go.
Yes, there is. Memorial Park has its own fund, and then the rest of them are covered by the Riverside Park Fund, London Drive and Foxville.
The reason that Parks Board is asking for that is we are in need of replacing, digging up, and rebuilding our tennis court. We've had several--
Can everybody hear, Marge? Let's get the microphone.
The reason for asking for that in a reserve fund is the tennis court is in need of more than just resurfacing. Needs to be dug up and rebuilt. But we're in the process, as a Parks Board, of trying to figure out whether it's staying in exactly the same place, or if we are trying, going to reconfigure where certain things are in the park. If you've been in Pingree Park, it looks like there's lots of space. However, about half, somewhere between half and two-thirds of that park is in floodplain and cannot have any impermeable surface. So we're very limited about where we can put things like tennis courts, basketball courts, pickleball courts, or anything that would require having a paved surface. We-- we're going to do it next year, this coming summer, but now because of requests for us to look at other things that we might want to try and fit in the park, in the non-toy calling part of the park, we need to put that off possibly to the following year. We're not sure. And again, the whole thing of if you vote for it and you don't get to it this summer, then the money lost. If you put it in a reserve fund, you can use it this summer or next summer as we need
Further discussion on Article 12? Yes, sir?
Not a resident, if I may speak.
Yes, without objection, we can hear your comments.
Liam Elio, Mountain Towns Director, I--
Hey, I get to be part of the Parks Board meetings, although I don't get to vote, so I just do what they say. To explain a little more, thank you, Marge, the $20,000 is an attempt to build that fund. Like Tina explained from the paved roads, if we don't spend that budget money, we don't get to keep it. And we have a lot of potential projects in paving. There is more discussion to be had. We want to hear as much as we can from the townspeople, so it's not just a decision our board is making. And if you look at page 25, where the Parks Report is, there's a QR code that I just rechecked, and it is not going to the accurate place. So my apologies for that. I'm still wary of technology, too. But we will be looking out through our Parks Facebook page, through town forum, through our Parks Board's meetings, more information of a separate meeting where we can have everybody have public input, as well as an accurate survey, so you can contribute from the comfort of your own as well. So the tennis court rebuild will be something coming up in next year's town meeting, and we hope to have our guts much more in role for you. For now, this is just an attempt to build our fund. Our other funds, as Melissa asked about, the other Parks Funds, are funded, my terms may not be right, so if you can correct me, we have invested, that pays ours to those funds, and that's why you may not see a request for those. Pingree does not have that capital investment that we can draw off of, so this is our attempt to make future repairs and improvements to Pingree without saddling everything on at once.
What are the issues we're planning, thinking about?
Well, I'm sorry, we didn't hear the question. What was--
What are the issues we're planning or thinking about? There's been a lot, we're not planning anything that's going to be part of getting the public input, but there's been discussions at Skate Park for a long time, and all of those, Pump Track, there's been discussion about expanding to two tennis courts to facilitate an increase in pickleball usage, and possibly freeing up a basketball court. Pumping, if you ever go down there during recent Mondays or when baseball games are on, our park is in need of some attention. And probably--
Yes, sir.
More of a comment to the question, but I understand the theory behind creating all these funds and putting money into them. But my understanding is also that that doesn't limit that money being used for any particular project that's in a pump, and it can be used for any project that they decide. I think there's something to be said for, if the Parks Committee wants to do a project, if they come to the town and they present that project, and they sell that project, and we vote to do that project. I think we're losing some of that with all these reserve funds.
Further discussion on Article 12? Hearing no further discussion, we'll vote. Article 12, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be deposited into the Pingree Park Reserve Fund? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 12 passes. Article 13, shall the town amend the Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund to add housing to the purposes of the fund, which is at present to support municipal efforts to plan, promote, and implement economic recovery, revitalization, and development efforts in Londonderry. This fund was established under Article 14 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting and amended under Article 19 of the April 2022 Town-- Annual Town Meeting. Will somebody please move and second Article 13? So moved and seconded. Melissa? Melissa Brown?
Yeah, second. Who did the first, who's second?
Oh, George. Article 13 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town-- and I'm sorry, I have to read all these again. It's just the law. Shall the town amend the Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund to add "housing" in quotations "to the purposes of the fund," which is in present in quotations, "to support municipal efforts to plan, promote, and implement economic recovery, revitalization," municipal efforts to plan, promote, and implement economic recovery, revitalization, and development efforts in Londonderry," end quote. This fund was established under Article 14 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting and amended under Article 19 of the April 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Discussion on Article 13. Yes?
Is this the same thing, or does this work with the Londonderry Housing Commission?
The question is, is this the same thing, or does this work with the Londonderry Housing Commission?
The Housing Commission.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Morrison on the Housing Commission, as well as Pam and Bill are here today, and what we are asking here is to add housing as part of the recovery, revitalization, and development efforts in Londonderry. I think that we hear that in the state, housing is considered a part of economic development, and right here in Londonderry, we've had two assessments done, one for Londonderry specifically in 2023, that indicated that enhancing our housing here in Londonderry will be a big part of economic development, as well as the Fort Towns Housing Project that happened last year that included Londonderry. The recommendation is that housing is a big part of making sure that we can be an economically developed area, so that's why we're asking for it to be.
Further discussion on Article 13, yes, sir?
Is the town of Londonderry trying to get into the housing scheme or whatever you want to call it? Are we going to build housing for low-income people? Is that what this is all about? Is the town of Londonderry trying to become a landlord?
The question is, is the town of Londonderry trying to become a landlord? I think, maybe we can find an answer to that from the Select Board before we go on to further.
Hi, I'm Martha Dale, and I also sit on the Housing Commission with Mary Ann and Sarah. No, we're not in the business of becoming landlords or developers, the idea is we want to make our community attractive to others who might be willing to put those kinds of resources in. That's not, we don't want to be in that business. It's just creating opportunities for us to learn more about it, to need and to be promoting opportunities.
Yes. Yes, ma'am? Yep.
I have a question, how much money do they have in their own reserve or their own fund to support the housing that they're talking about before they're asking the town to put this money into that fund?
I believe it's a town, like Tina, I think.
There, currently, they don't have anything, they have a budget lined up, I don't know if that's.
I think we have two questions up here first before we get back to you.
I'm on the Housing Commission as well, I think the point is that there is no money currently. Anything that the Housing Commission would recommend still goes to the Select Board for approval. In terms of projects, they're really talking about potentially making funds available to homeowners that might want to upgrade an ABU to convert it to long-term rental housing. So it's not about new development at this juncture, it's really finding ways to increase the housing stock as economically feasible as we can.
Matt, right here, yes, sir?
My name is Tommy Gooden. I was under the impression when we put this 1% tax in, it was meant towards property tax relief. Are we refocusing that after the fact and then putting it into a budget? Shouldn't they just have to go to the Select Board and ask for funds, as opposed to having it semi earmarked by having it listed? I was, I'm the exception, that was the reason why we voted for that 1%.
So I think the, as a matter of semantics, I don't think the 1% option tax is on, in this article at all? So it's really, that part of the question isn't germane, and.
My understanding is that's where the money is coming from, that they're asking you to put on, and it's relative to that.
I don't believe that that's true, but somebody else can answer that question.
Because I heard in the Housing Committee meeting that they discussed about the 1% tax, they wanted to have the second jump back for their usage.
That was discussed at one point, we decided not to go that route, one, because it was gonna be a really confusing article, and two, the people voted already what to do with that money, so that is not part of this.
Uh, yes, ma'am? Back.
This money that's going into the housing, with this money that you want, or the idea of adding housing to this, would money then be only allowed to go, is wanting to put in an ABU for increased housing and their monetary gain, or would it be open to somebody like me, because I'd like to dress my house up and make it better looking for the neighbors' approval?
I guess the question also boils down to, how's the money going to be used? And Shane might be able to address that.
Shane, could you, this is right here. This article simply to determine whether or not housing is part of economic development in the community, this is not a function of money, this is, is, is housing part of the overall economic development strategy that the town needs to address. The next article has to do with funding and, you know, I'll leave it at that, but this is simply whether or not housing is included in that reserve fund. The use of those reserved funds ultimately results to the Select Board deciding what could be for a housing project, it could be for matching with the development block grant funds, particularly that major.
Yes.
How much is currently in the Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund?
Hang on one second.
Currently, as of June 30th, there was 10,000, and we voted another 5,000 last year, so currently there's 15,000.
Um, did, I can't remember, did you speak on this article before? All right, let's just, we'll go over here, we'll catch here at the very end.
Isn't this article just about money?
Yes.
The question is, is this article just about word, and the answer is yes.
Can we move on? Can I call the question?
Uh, I believe we have one more question that will, or comment.
So my question is, I think it goes along with what you're saying, we already have a Community Economic Improvement Fund, why are we adding the word of housing to it? Because it seems like it's a money grab, if you just let the housing out of it, it's still a Community Economic Fund, or we're reusing or making something more mess.
Somebody like to address that?
So, yeah, anybody can actually ask the Select Board, as any housing issue, we have to ask the Select Board to access funds for this specific project from here. We are just trying to acknowledge that housing is one of the larger economic drivers for us right now, and that will perhaps enhance education around some housing things that we might, that might be solvable, and also, and we weren't invited to the table beforehand with how it was written, so this is just ensuring that it can be invited to the table to have housing as one of the projects.
Further discussion on Article 13. Yes, sir?
So, just to clarify, so Article 13, is the only thing we're voting on is to add the word housing?
That is correct.
That's all.
That's, that's all we're voting on, that's correct. Any other discussion on Article 13? Hearing no further discussion, we'll vote, Article 13, shall the town amend the Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund to add the word housing for the purposes of the fund, which at present says "to support municipal efforts to plan, promote, and implement economic recovery, revitalization, and development efforts in Londonderry," end quote. This fund was established under Article 14 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting and amended under Article 19 of the April 2022 Town Meeting. All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
I will ask for division, all those who said aye, please stand. Thank you, you may sit, all those who voted nay, please stand. And by my eye, the ayes have it. Is there any objection? The ayes have it, Article 13 passes. Article 14, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be deposited in the economic, in the Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund? Will somebody please move and second? It's been moved and seconded, Article 14, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be deposited into the Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund? Article 14 is now on the floor for discussion, discussion, yes, sir?
So we just went through this, and we said that there was $10,000 in this, here we are, $10,000 in it, and we just added another $5,000 to it.
No, as of June 30th, we had 10,000, and last year we voted to put another five, so it makes.
Now you're up with 15,000. And now, just because we have one word to it, we want to put another 25,000 in there. Does this seem odd to anybody else?
Would the Select Board like to address that, or?
What the housing, Mary Ann, would you like to address this question?
So it was great to get the fund, and thank you for adding housing to it, 15,000, even though we won't quite have 15,000 yet, just to allocate, if there's an allocation, to the Select Board for allocation, is not a great amount in order to make a difference in many economic projects. For instance, outside of housing, if somebody wanted to create an adult learning center as an economic driver, that would not be enough money to do that. So adding a little bit more money to the fund will give us the pool to have appropriate level of projects for the town in order to make a difference. In the Housing Commission specifically, we have a few different projects on our list of things to be exploring and figuring out if they work. We do not have a shovel-ready project tomorrow, if this gets funded, but we have a lot of ideas that we need some, some amounts of funding that could create a difference. And it's not just for just to address from before, it's not for low-income housing, that word actually doesn't come up in any of our goals for our Housing Commission, it's for accessible housing for the existing workforce that already lives in this town, which that's been a major problem finding housing for people who are actually doing the work of the town right now. So this is the insurance, because a reserve will roll over, that there will be something when a committee, any committee in the town, any project in the town is ready for something to be shovel-ready, that there is a way to access that money that will impact the town more quickly. As far as other economic ones, well, I'll speak to the Londonderry housing, I think we said the AD, you know, the enhancement of AD, which is what Will was talking about, there's also the lease-to-labor programs, you might have gotten in your mouth a flyer of a couple of different ideas and the difference that they could make from the Housing Commission, but there's several ways, and I invite you to come to our meetings to help figure that out, or read the assessment, which puts out some of the ideas that we could do to enhance our, to increase our workforce housing for Londonderry.
That's right.
So I am part of the Londonderry Park Department, AMZILR, and as an example, we do fundraisers, we do things to raise money for the private apartment. I want to know if the, if this committee has done anything, even though we're talking about a whole entire different amount of money. Housing is way more than us raising money to buy clothing for our private, you know, for our, for our private man. Have you done any fundraising, have you tried to raise your own money? Because before you go and ask the townspeople for money, you should try to do something to raise money for what you believe in, and show the effort, that that's where your heart is, for what you believe in. I think it's a lot of money to be asking, do you put the fund for a reserve, when if your committee has not even tried to do, any fundraisers has not tried to do anything to raise your own money for the group, or whatever you want to call it, that you represent?
Yes, ma'am?
The Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund was established in 2021 and amended in 2022. Have there been any community economic improvement activities related to recovery, revitalization, or development efforts that used this fund prior at all? Seems to me that no one's.
Can we go back and answer the first question?
Yeah, yeah, let's grab the microphone.
Hi there, I wanted to answer your question about, you know, what have we done as a community? And this is maybe not exactly translatable, but the Mountain Towns Housing Project, which was the vehicle for creating the home on Botham Lane, raised, and I'm gonna look at Lori back there, we raised probably $300,000 of cash donations and in-kind donations to build that one affordable home for a community member, who's a wonderful community member, but that was a one-off, one we tried, a model we tried, very much like using the Habitat for Humanity model, in terms of who owns the property, you know, is it a, is it a forever deed restricted, so it can't accelerate in terms of appreciation value? But that was an extraordinary amount of money that our community raised for a first attempt at affordable housing. It just proved that there is a commitment to making that kind of difference in our town, and I think that the Housing Commission is trying to think of other vehicles that might be more replicable, those one-offs are hard. The idea is, let's look at other opportunities that we could do that maybe are not as individually expensive, but get a bigger bang for the, for the dollar. So I think it's marvelous example of our community stepping forward.
And I'm sorry, there was a, there was a second question that now I've lost track of.
What it was, what have we used that fund for?
Oh, what have, is there, have we used that fund, and if so, how much?
We have not, we've got funds that ain't left.
Okay. Further discussion on Article 14, we'll go over here and then here.
So, as a town, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, it doesn't seem like a lot of money is $25,000, but to me, we need to know, we need to be just the way responsible or know where this money is going, and what it's being used for. I don't feel that they described what it's gonna be used for. I have no idea, it sounded like a bunch of words that didn't really describe what it's gonna be used for and what the plan is. I don't even know what they do.
Martha, you want to try to attach to that one?
This is a fund that would be controlled by the Select Board, so the Select Board would receive a request for an allocation from any, any organization that was working on some kind of community development work, and it would be up to us to decide whether or not it met all the right criteria, or you as a citizen to think that you were fiscally responsible with it. So there, there's nothing per se on the table right now that's a project that you're voting on, it's, you're creating a reservoir of funds that are available if projects do come up, whether or not it's another housing assessment someday, or it's something of that sort. That's, so that's gonna land right here with the Select Board.
Yes, sir.
It's my good buddy here, it seems to me like it's, it's money chasing a project rather than a project chasing money, and I, I think that's kind of going it backwards. I believe that what is going on right now with the waste remediation that's supposedly taking place in town is a great incentive for housing and for people to develop housing in this town, that's a project. incentive for housing and for people to develop housing in this town. That's a project I think that's, you know, we're getting on board with, but having just a fund for money, you know, money that's looking for a project seems like a waste of money right now for me.
Okay. I think you spoke before, did you speak on this one or not yet? Okay, go ahead.
This is kind of a follow-up from my earlier comment on the previous one, but it's relevant. I'm just concerned with where this fund is going to go, because when this whole thing started several months back, the select board hearings, I know the housing commission asked to have that one percent, have controlling interest of it. And when the select board pushed back out with its voice, that we wanted the community to take it. And then the comment was, well, we need nice things for the town. And I'm like, we're spending money that I was under the assumption that we're going to use tactfully for nice things for parties or communities. And I'm just concerned that we're just, this is just going to sit and thing waiting to be used, just like the general leaders, waiting to find something that to spend it on. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to get to you. I haven't forgotten about you. I just want to make sure everybody else has had a chance to speak first. Yes, sir.
I think it's important to note that the availability of housing in London Derry is a critical issue. If you have local business, to the health clinic, attracting and retaining people who live within a reasonable distance of town, very difficult. So it's critical from an economic standpoint, the town businesses, the services, et cetera, and that. In terms of money chasing projects, it's very difficult to go out, engage the community, find projects, encourage people to then present things to us. Anybody, it's a kind of pool of funds available to access. So we're just one piece of what that economic fund could be used for. You need a reasonable amount of money, reasonably to do anything, they don't want to lose anything about construction costs, et cetera, and it's ultimately controlled by the select board. So I think it's important for that town to be able to build up that fund.
Okay, comments from anybody who has not yet spoken? Yes. Right up here.
I would just like the community to remember that there is actually a committee actively working on developing a list of projects for flood recovery. And at some point, probably not in the far future, some of those projects will need funding to forward. They'll need matching funding if they're going to go after grades to accomplish any of them, or they could be funded if they're a small project out of this fund. So while you can say that it's money that's chasing projects, there are a lot of projects that are already being thought of to help the community with development, housing being one of them. But anything that's related to economic recovery, particularly due to flooding, funding for that is going to be available soon. And because funding from the state and federal government is going to be uncertain in the future, the town being able to act on funding that's available now is going to be really crucial for getting projects moved forward. So just something to keep in mind. I know everyone is really focused on housing because of the previous article, but there are things that are being worked on currently. And none of those things will move forward without available funding. So I just encourage everyone to keep in mind that there's a lot of work to be done in this community for it to have a thriving future. And none of that comes cheap, unfortunately.
Okay, further comments from people that have not yet spoken on Article 14. Yes, sir.
I just have a general question about housing. I think, as I drive around town, and I see places that are vacant, let's take an example, Mike and Ellen Carver's manufactured home across from the mill, which was, I've been in it when Mike and Ellen were alive. And the house next door was a long time, for a long time, also available. And I have a neighbor that just pointed out his house is going to be for sale, all moderately built and already built, of course, and probably need fixed up. Who actually is responsible for, or is, should be encouraging the housing department of the town to fix up existing houses? And we don't have to spend $300,000. I'm building a brand new house with the full system. And, and that's my basic question. How do we take advantage of existing possibilities?
I'd very like to address that. Uh, Mary Ann, can?
Thanks. That is one of the priorities that was addressed in the London Derry Housing Assessment. And currently working with Penny Eisenhower, our chair, to do a grant to help, to help with those types of houses. And we are keeping track of, if you can look at the, the housing assessment, and it gives a percentage and another, which I don't have in my head right now, on how many of our houses need that sort of help. And it's a, it's a, it's a good amount. So we are working on a grant to adjust that, but that could also be an incentivized program that could be considered.
Further discussion on Article 14 for people who have not yet spoken. Okay, we can open it up for a second round for people who have already had something to say.
So two people gave, saying that there's projects, and they know the projects that are out there, that they're focusing on. I would like to know what those projects are, unless they're secret and nobody can know. And then to another question is, is it something that it's up to the town or this committee to go around and fix property owners that own their own home? To beautify their house or fix their house? Or like if I have something wrong with my house, like this is where that money's going to go?
Somebody like to address that question?
I can address some.
Okay.
As far as fixing up people's houses with this fund, I would not say that's something that the town is looking to do at all. And as far as projects go, long-term recovery is looking at multiple projects. We're really just trying to figure out and find them right now mostly. I have a list. Let me grab it. So this is just a draft list of what we've come up, some of what we've come up with so far. Develop an emergency preparedness plan for the next flood. Create standing volunteer organizations, so we have a organized volunteer force when we have the next flood, and we not just having people show up with neighborhood connections with no direction. And provide those volunteers with a preparedness training. Mitigation, erosion on roads, invasive species work, scoping study on the North Village to look at the Utley Brook and the confluence of the Utley Brook and West River. And create a regional watershed study to look at flood storage outside the village. And create a regional watershed management task force. All this will most likely need grant funding. And as Kelly stated, basically, all grants have a match. Some of them are 25%, some of them are more, some of them are less. And
So I agree with that. What does that have to do with the $25,000 for housing? You do not mention anything about housing?
This is an economic development reserve fund. It's not just about housing. We added housing in there, so if there is a project, housing could use some of the funds if the select board agrees to it.
So as of right now, though, there's no example of a project that has to do with housing to go with that money at all?
Housing would have to answer that question.
So there are a few things that we're exploring, and one of them is a lease locals project. Another one would be an ADU, increasing ADUs for leasing to, to locals project. And there's a couple of other incentivized projects on our goal sheet of the assessment. And those are the things that we're exploring. We've reached a point where it's hard to explore much further until we have a concrete amount of how, how we might be able to use something. And so those are the projects that are on our mind and on the plan for next steps. And I'm also on the FEMA team that Tom was speaking of, and those are also really great projects. But this is for economic development for the town, and the board will be able to decide that. So that's how we're doing it. And also, just to address, the grant that I'm working on to improve people's houses is not for beautification. It's for health and safety, because we have seniors and families living in homes that are unsafe for them.
Further discussion on Article 14.
I would just add, to be clear, that the, the $25,000, if you read the article, is not exclusively for housing. Housing has been added to the fund, but the $25,000 is specifically for the Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund.
Um, all right. We'll go over here and then back to here.
Just real quick, I think that, that the word economic.
Oops, oh dear.
I think the word economic in there is what is confusing. It just seemed, and then I guess the other thing I was, I believe the select board member said that they, the select board, would have to approve any spending out of this. So I believe you said there's $15,000 in the fund now, or will be, and then, so then another 25, so it'll be 40 grand in there. So are you saying that the select board has to approve any spending of that 40,000?
And, yes, sir.
Hopefully, this is germane. Another tool that the housing, you know, folks might be able to use here in town, insurance select board's thought about, is tax payments. So if you've got somebody building a house that is for affordable housing, you know, you think about a tax payment as a, you know, a shoe horn to get somebody into that project, you know, as a, as a developer. And, you know, that's just as good as cash in the bank, in my opinion.
Further discussion on Article 14. Hearing no further discussion, we'll vote. Article 14, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be deposited into the Community Economic Improvement Reserve Fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
And I think we'll ask for another division. I think the ayes had it, but let's have a division just to make sure. All those who said, voted aye, please stand. And all those that voted nay, please stand. Okay. I have no idea. And so I think the simple thing to do, we could either count, or we could go to a paper ballot. Paper ballot requires seven people asking. Otherwise, we'll do another division and we'll count. All right, let's count. All those in favor, all, can we count off? That's an idea. We could, if you count a number and then said, this is really fun. Let's just, let's just count. So all those that voted in favor, voted aye, please stand. Forty-three. Okay. All those who voted nay, please stand.
Forty-seven, forty-six, forty-eight, the other.
Forty-six. Forty-six ayes, twenty-seven nays. The eyes have it. Article 14 passes. Article 15, transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting. Anybody have any other business before the meeting? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I did an inquiry at the end of the year last year for interviews, to have done exit interviews for all of the folks who resigned from standing committees. And I'm just wondering what the progress is in that.
Did you guys get that? So the question was, there was a request for interview process, exit interview process for everybody that resigned from standing committees, and what the progress on that was.
So yeah, Martha Dale and I conducted the exit interviews, and we currently are finalizing our report, and we will be putting that out to the public on March 17th.
Any other business? Yes, sir. Uh, hang on, Bruce, we're getting a microphone for you.
Thanks. I remember that there was a prior committee meeting, Boston, here in Jamaica, on the river, and flooding and stuff like that. And what do you have your points on that?
Uh, that collaboration hasn't really gone anywhere recently. It's, each town has gone their own way, really.
Yes, sir.
We lost a very valuable community member recently, anyone who's been to town meetings over the years. I would like you to fondly remember John Barry, who passed away. As anybody who's been here for a few meetings, he was very good at keeping us on our toes about other organizations asking us for money and supplying money into that, so we can make our best judgments on that. And I feel a little miss of it at these town meetings, because, you know, we used to be able to go past lunch when he was here. Now we get done before lunch, so. God bless you, John, you're a good speaker. Thank you. Yes. Other business, other business.
Speaking of exit, exiting the Old River, we're sitting in Shane's own, who'd be with us. Past June, is that true? Today's his official last one?
Today's my last day as a town administrator. I am staying on a hard-time basis through June to assist with transition and also to continue to manage several projects that are at critical, critical stages, so that they don't fall off the cliff.
Is there a decision?
Oh, yes, yeah. We've appointed a young lady, Amy Tolle, who's coming to us. She starts on the 24th of March. She is a professional district by trade. She works in the town of Brattleboro, has. And she has served on the Putney Select Board for a number of terms and has been there chairwoman. So she's a very competent gal. And I think it's probably appropriate for us to give a, at least a round of applause for Shane's work.
for Shane's work.
Other business? Hearing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded, and we adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.